Calling to order, the Monday, June 18th, 2018, regular meeting of the 37th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Cipriani, please call the roll.
Mayor Proton Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Here.
Councilmember Dean?
Here.
Councilmember Gavin?
Here.
Councilmember Henin?
Here.
Councilmember Stedman?
Here.
And Mayor Turbrack?
Here. First order of business is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
May I make a motion with one amendment, please? I'd like to suggest that we move the communications up between currently listed items 12 and 13, so that we can communicate, then go into closed session, and then procedurally just adjourn after that.
Is there support?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Blanchard.
I won.
Any additional changes or corrections to the agenda? Seeing none, Ms. Cipriani, would you please call the roll?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henin?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Agenda has been approved. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have reached the citizens' comments portion of our evening, where you may present your thoughts on issues that are not included on tonight's agenda. Councilmembers will not engage you in discussion, but if your concern needs to be addressed by a member of the city staff or Department of the City, please make sure that you sign your name on the sheet provided at the clerk's table. Remember, you may speak on a specific agenda item while it is being considered. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and city of residence. Okay, seeing nobody rushing to the microphone, we will close citizens' comments and move on to our order of business. Ms. Cipriani, would you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
Approval of the minutes. Matter of approving the minutes of the 37th Council meetings on Monday, May 21st, 2018, and Monday, June 4th, 2018. Warrant. Matter of approving warrant number 1327. Proclamation number P-418. Matter of approving a proclamation designating July as Parks and Recreation Month in the City of Berkeley.
Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Support approved by Councilmember Stedman, with support from Councilmember Henin. Any corrections or additions? Seeing none, Ms. Cipriani, would you please call the roll?
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henin?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Now, move on to our regular agenda. Ms. Cipriani, would you please read item number one on tonight's regular agenda?
Recognitions, presentations. Matter of any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
I've asked Councilmember Dean to read proclamation P-0418.
A proclamation of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, proclaiming July as Parks and Recreation Month. Whereas, parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the City of Berkeley; and whereas, our parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region; and whereas, parks and recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for individuals with mental and/or physical disabilities, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens; and whereas, parks and recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction; and whereas, parks and recreation areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community; and whereas, parks and natural recreation areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of the air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development, and produce habitat for wildlife; and whereas, our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors; and whereas, the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month; and whereas, the City of Berkeley recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources. Now, therefore, the City of Berkeley proclaims Section 1, that the Council of the City of Berkeley hereby proclaims July as Parks and Recreation Month, and encourages all citizens to celebrate healthy, active lifestyles by participating in their choice of parks and recreation activities. Introduced and passed at a regular city council meeting on Monday, June 18th, 2018.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. McCarleton, do you want to take this proclamation, or do you want us to hold on to it here?
Hold on.
All right, we'll hold on. No problem. We'll keep that. Ms. Cipriani, would you please read regular item number two on the agenda?
Resolution Number R-2318. Matter of considering a resolution proposing a charter amendment for capital improvement project millage to be placed on the November 6, 2018, general election ballot.
Is there a motion to approve R-2318? Motion to approve. Support approved by Councilmember Gavin, with support from Councilmember Dean. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the first of two related items, as we lead up to the possibility of asking our residents to fund updates to the city's infrastructure, the city's community center, as well as the city hall in November. This is a crucial step. Nothing has actually been committed to the ballot just yet, so the next step would be have the local governing body, the city council of the City of Berkeley, to actually approve the language itself on its way to the ballot. We have actually asked two experts to come in and discuss with council some of these items. We are joined by Pat McGow from Miller Canfield, as well as Robert Buzinski from Buzinski &amp; Company. Miller Canfield is a, if you don't mind me saying, an absolute expert in this topic. They're the go-to for many municipalities across the state, as they consider charter amendments, ballot options, bond proposals. Basically, you name it, Miller Canfield is one of the leading experts in it. And Buzinski &amp; Company is likewise one of the premier financiers, on the bond side of things, for municipalities across the state. So, we are certainly in two very good hands, and have two very knowledgeable individuals representing any questions that may come up this evening, so. Mr. Mayor, if you'd like to ask them up, or if there are any questions first off the bat, or...
Well, let's get some feedback from council, and then certainly have them come up and answer any questions that we might have. So, as council, we've obviously talked a few months back about the potential of putting these on the ballot in November, the reasons why, and everything that went into that. Now, we're at the point where we have to decide one. Are we still going to move forward with this, into the language and answer any potential questions that anybody might have up here, and that residents might have trying to read this language? So, with that, who would like to jump in? Councilmember Henin?
Yeah, I support putting all three on the ballot. And the agenda item right now is the millage, but, you know, I'm speaking generally also of the two bonds, because I see it all as part of a bigger piece, and, you know, part of that is, you know, some people are going to say, "I can't afford if we put all of this all at once," but if we, you know, we, I see a need that, you know, we need to put these out there, and, you know, if it isn't now, it's going to be later that it's going to come. So, let's put it all out there, not try and look tricky, like, "Oh, let's slide it in later," which, you know, some people might think if we spread it out. So, let's get it all out there, let the people decide what they can afford now, and then we'll be able to go with the wishes of our residents.
Okay, thank you. Additional comments? Mayor Proton?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yes, there's been many conversations amongst council, and more importantly, with the residents, on this item before us now, and then the subsequent items yet to come. And we've received a tremendous amount of input and feedback on the process, on the approach, on the need. And this one before us here speaks to the capital improvement projects, such as the roads, streets, sewers, water lines, those types of things. We've had the opportunity to preview the language that would be proposed for the ballot, and I was curious if it might make sense for the city manager or someone to actually read that language now, for folks that may have not had a chance to actually see it, just so they can kind of know what it is that we're specifically talking about on this item, and then, again, perhaps with the subsequent item, when we get around to that, too, if that makes sense.
Sure. I can read, or you can read it?
I have no problem with doing it.
Okay.
Let's see. Berkeley City Charter Amendment for Capital Improvement Project Millage shall Section 9.4 of the Charter of the City of Berkeley, Oakland County, Michigan, be amended to permit the levy by the city of an additional ad valorem property tax in the amount not to exceed two mills for 10 years from 2019 through 2028, to acquire and construct capital improvements for the city, including roads, streets, water, sewer, and other capital improvement projects. It is estimated that two mills would raise approximately $1,142,783 when first levied in 2019. And that would be a simple yes or no question. Nice, thank you.
Additional, Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd just like to make a few comments on the fact that we're doing this because we have put off infrastructure work for a long time, because we didn't have any money. The state has put things on the back burner going to municipalities, and I don't think anybody can see this, but those of us all know the green chart with the one red bar that's on the bottom here. That's all the 50 states, and that's the money that they've provided to their municipalities over the period 2002 to 2012. And they all went up, except for the red bar at the end, which is Michigan, which went down 9% in that timeframe. So, we have been hurting for a long time, and if we're ever going to get our infrastructure back where it needs to be, we have to do something like this. Thank you.
And you're right, councilmember. I think an important part of the conversation, when you mentioned putting things off, this year, the residents remember, we did have a relatively aggressive capital improvements plan, that we are trying to catch up and improve a lot of our, a lot of the infrastructure. And it's not that we, you know, have just been kicking this down the road, but we wanted to continue to provide the services that our residents have come to expect, the high standard that we expect of our services. In order to be able to continue that, despite shrinking shared revenue, we had to make some decisions in terms, and funding our post-employment benefits is also something that's extremely important to us. And to be able to do all of those things on our budget is not always very easy. Nobody likes to pay higher taxes, believe me, we're all residents up here as well, we completely understand. But, at the same time, in order to, again, continue with the high standard that our residents expect, the high standard of our buildings, our infrastructure, as was just mentioned, roads, streets, water, sewer, other capital improvement projects, this will go a long way to allowing the city to update some of those items, and to continue updating them at least over the next 10 years. Additional questions on, any specific issues with the language? This is relatively straightforward language as far as proposals go. We've seen some that is not quite as straightforward. Okay? Any comments from anybody on this, before we call up our experts, if they need to add anything? Mayor Proton?
Thank you. So, a process question this time, now that we've had a bit of an opportunity to level set on the need for this, and we've actually had a chance to kind of hear the proposed language. Could you describe some of the steps and the timing going forward? If we were to move forward with this tonight, what the next steps would be to get it onto the ballot?
Sure. There are some additional steps, and actually, I think Pat McGow would be a good person, but because this is a charter amendment, our charter is very clear that if you levy 10 operating mills, it needs to be provided for, 3 mills for public safety needs to be provided for, and so this being a new type of millage, needs to be provided for in text in the charter. But because it's a charter amendment, it would have to go through a review process by both the Attorney General's office, as well as the Governor's office. So, one of the reasons why it's always good to be well out in front of the ballot in question, so that's why we're talking about this in June for a November ballot, but, yes, our review process doesn't just come before this body, but also the AG's office, as well as the Governor's office.
Nice. Certainly, more can be said on it. Thank you. Pat, anything you'd like to add?
Actually, I don't have much to add. I think it was well summarized. I will say that in terms of the timing deadline, as the city manager indicated, after it goes through approval by the Attorney General and the Governor, it needs to be submitted to the county clerk in final form, and that has to occur 12 weeks before the election date, which is August 14th. So, that's the real deadline for getting ballot language finalized, for any question of a local unit to go on the ballot, and that's why talking about this in June makes sense, to kind of allow for those things to happen, because that's an absolute deadline, according to the statute. So, if it runs through that process, and it's filed with the clerk, then the clerk would take the necessary actions to have that included in the local section of the ballot, when voters go to the polls in November, and print it on the absentee ballots as well. So, that's the reason for the timing, doing it this far in advance.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. Do you see any problem with this, AG and the Governor's office, the way we've written it, and the way you've written it, actually?
No. No, I mean, you know, the real reason, and you folks know this, but, you know, cities are allowed to indicate in their charters their maximum tax rate, which cannot be more than 20 mills. And right now, you have a charter that says 13, so you have room to make a charter amendment for any purpose that the city wants to, and specify that, and that's really what this is. So, really, as long as it summarizes the proposed amendment, and the amendment is legally authorized, those approvals are routinely granted.
Thank you.
Mr. Attorney?
Just to, I guess, further elaborate on Mr. McGow's answers, the scrivener of many proposed charter proposals and bond proposals, I can attest that Mr. McGow has very closely and strictly followed the rulebook. He's got all the magic words in there, it's in the proper format, that's why it appears the way it does. It should help immensely on getting it through the scrutiny of the Governor's office and the Attorney General, and, for that matter, the County Elections Bureau. So, and we're on a good track. We do need to give a little bit of time and leeway, because we don't, as we already know, we don't control what happens in Lansing, or how quickly they move. So, I don't think it's any too soon for you to be acting on this tonight. I think it gives us sufficient cushion that we can get through that review process and meet that August 14th ballot submillage deadline, hopefully with some time to spare.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Proton?
Thank you. One last question. We talked about content, we talked about process, and so I'd like to, just again, a surface force of dialogue, the notion of communication and outreach. So, we now know the timeline, the steps, the reviews that would happen for this. Can we talk a little bit about the way in which we, as a community, or as the city, can inform the residents? I know we're not to advocate for or against, but we can provide facts and information. And so, can you elaborate a little bit on our thoughts about continuing, you know, the town hall-type discussions that we've had, any kind of flyers or newsletters, interviews on the cable channel, those types of things? What's in our thinking around how we might communicate, how we could activate the new committee that we formed, to help us with this kind of resident engagement? Anything that you can share around our initial thinking on the outreach?
Certainly. First and foremost, we will continue the town hall meetings. I think they've been very fruitful, they've been very well attended, the level of the conversations has been very high, have been, you know, I always seem to be impressed by our residents. So, those are an absolute must to continue, certainly. But also, as you mentioned, informational brochures, I think, would be appropriate. I know Jay and I have been discussing, Jay, our communications coordinator, and I have been discussing paper outreach materials, and then we talked about also doing interviews on the cable station as well. Those also get uploaded to our YouTube channel, so they're shareable through social network outlets, and just the key of the game is providing as much factual information as possible. Our CEAC, our Community Engagement Advisory Committee, is meeting for the second time on June 27th, and it's certainly going to be a topic for them to talk about, as well as, what are the best way to reach some of the segments of our community that maybe aren't, don't have their ears akin to this just yet? It seems a little bit early for a November ballot to them, but putting together useful information for people, informative information for people, and make sure it gets out to all segments of our residents, whether they're just sitting there waiting on them to get it, or whether they're hungry for it. So, that is kind of the approach that we're taking right now, to try to give a long answer, sorry.
Right, yeah, I appreciate that very much. It's good to have a thoughtful approach, because these are important matters.
Absolutely.
And I'm thankful for the consideration that you're putting into this.
Sure, thank you.
Councilmember Dean?
Thank you. I'm just curious about the brochures. Will they be in, like, in city hall, at public safety? Are they going to be delivered? What is the method of dispersment?
It's a good question. We talked about how to best disperse it right now. That's one of the topics that CEAC has been discussing, is how to get this information out. We'd envisioned having print materials available at all the city facilities, for anybody who's interested in them, but also talk, whether we have people, volunteer groups elect to hand them out door-to-door, or whether we preemptively mail them to all the residents, is something that we're still discussing now. And it's one of the things that we really want our CEAC to weigh in on, is how, you know, from the, as the resident, putting the resident hat on, what would be the best way to deliver this information to you? Would you open it if it came to you in the mail? Would you actually look at it? Is there some other preferred method to put this information in your hands? So, on the 27th, I thought it would be a very fruitful meeting for them.
Sounds good, thank you.
Councilmember Stedman?
The CEAC is going to be meeting next on June 27th, and the homework between the last meeting and that meeting was to be talking to people to find out how they would like to hear information, have any information dispersed to them, not just millage information, but any information. So, that will be a big topic of discussion, June 27th, 6:30, and we'll be meeting in the conference room in this building.
Looking forward to it.
Okay. Any other comments from councilmembers on the first item that we're... Any of our residents here have any comments before we move on?
Sue Citraro, Berkeley. I was just curious, there was supposed to be a sewer study done? I thought it was supposed to be completed in April, and I was just wondering what the status was. Thanks.
The sewer study, we've got a draft back, it's been, and our, we're working on it with HRC, as well as our Department of Public Works. We did anticipate it back in April. Some of the early drafts we got back, as we were looking for the information, we were reviewing it to make sure it was telling us, it was as constructive as possible, and so we should have, I think council's looking at a draft version right now, and we should have it available. I'm looking at DPW and HRC here. I think we talked about making a presentation at the July meeting, so that everyone can, so we're all having the same conversation after July.
Okay, seeing no additional questions or comments, Ms. Cipriani, would you please call the roll on R-2318?
Gavin?
Yes.
Henin?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Ms. Cipriani, would you please read item number three on tonight's agenda?
Resolution Number 2418. Matter of considering a resolution submitting bond proposals for the proposed community center and city hall historic fire hall renovation to be placed on the November 6, 2018, general election ballot.
Is there a motion to approve R-2418?
Motion to approve.
Councilmember Dean, with support from Councilmember Gavin, I think? Is that right? Not right?
We got switched up earlier, so you're all good.
You've got to throw your voices a little differently over there. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Second of the two items. This is a resolution committing the language for both of the bond proposals that we've been discussing, the bond to redevelop the community center, and the bond to renovate city hall. I can read those if you like.
Might as well.
Okay, thanks, sir. Community center bond proposals, shall the City of Berkeley, Michigan, borrow the principal sum of not to exceed $15,375,000, the text there, payable in not to exceed 21 years from the date of issue. The issue and issue its unlimited general tax obligation bonds to pay the cost of acquiring, constructing, furnishing, and equipping a new community center, including demolition of existing structures, parking, and site improvements. The estimated millage would be levied in 2019 is .08837 mills, or .88 cents per $1,000 of taxable value, and the estimated simple average annual millage rate required to retire the bonds is 1.6335 mills, or $1.63 per $1,000 taxable value. That is the community center portion?
Let's take these one at a time.
Sure.
All right. Community center. We know what we're looking at. Questions, comments on the language, or on moving this forward? Again, the first thing we have to decide is, yes, are we moving forward with this? And secondly, are we comfortable with the language? Not that we have a whole lot of room there, but we have the people here in this room that can help us, just to make sure it's understood. I mean, the biggest thing for me, there have been times in the past where residents have saw something that was on the ballot, and thought they were voting one way, but they were actually voting the complete opposite way. So, I want to make sure that we are as clear as possible with these, and that nobody is under any false pretenses. So, community center in November on the ballot, yes or no?
I'd like to comment on it a little bit. If anybody is concerned about this, I think they should go to the community center, into the senior area, where you can look outside without looking through the window. As you can see, right through the cracks in the walls. And if you go around back behind the community center, you can see the back wall is kind of, got a bulge to it. So, we've either got to do something major, or a whole lot of reconstruction, which would probably cost almost this much anyway, because the building is in extremely bad shape. It's at the end of its useful life, as far as I'm concerned, so, thank you.
Additional comments from council? Councilmember Henin?
I know one concern that some people have is that the final form of the community center, where it's going to be placed, you know, if approved and we build, is, has already been decided, and not going to change. But, want to make sure it's clear that there is still room for dialogue and discussion, and even after it's passed, we'll continue the discussion, you know, if it's passed, to, you know, focus groups, talk to people, to make sure we get what is the best use and the best placement in the city.
That's accurate, yeah. Right up until construction drawings are drafted, we'll have a conversation about what the best amenities are, the best design to suit the city. So, yeah, I know the director has talked about swanning inputs right up until the last moment as possible.
Thank you.
Additional comments or questions? Mayor Proton?
Thank you, Your Honor. And just a point of clarification, that this does include the entire parcel that has the ice arena as part of it. So, this proposal, for those that haven't had a chance to study it, this would take care of that as well, as part of the broader vision, to reactivate that space in new ways, and give us a lot more opportunities, a lot more features and amenities for our residents.
Yes, you're absolutely sure, absolutely right. So, that is the building itself, site improvements, parking lots, stormwater detention system. There's a lot that goes into that dollar amount. And actually, we've asked Stan Tech, who's been, who's been working with us on this, to actually give us an enhanced breakdown on the building itself, the site improvements, the detention system, how much each one of those individually costs, because it sounds like $15 million is a very large number, but there's, that needs to be our total and comprehensive ask of our residents. So, that's contingencies, construction, permitting, and then the buildings themselves. So, there's a lot that goes into that number, so you're absolutely right.
Nice, thank you.
Follow-up question, perhaps, for yourself or Ms. McCarleton? If this were to proceed, do we have even, so I don't want to commit us to a specific date of the grand opening, or something like that, but you could brief, I'd like to ask first about the timing, are we, you know, is this a five-year project? Is this a two-year project? So, folks can kind of understand how rapidly we'd be...
So, folks can kind of understand how rapidly we would be moving forward with?
Do you want me to take it? Yeah, so the, the general timeline right now would be all the site and pre-construction focus groups, all of that would take place from basically the time that the, the vote is approved, November, December. That would be about six months, looking at breaking ground probably in June, May of June of 2019. And then, originally, we were given about a year date out, so you were looking at the spring of 2020, but that's been pushed back, and the most recent thing I saw, to more probably the fall of 2020. So, you're not talking five years, but you're not talking exactly 12 months. It's, it's a little more than that, and really, you're not even breaking ground for those first several months.
Awesome, thank you. So, given that timing, I have two follow-up questions. First, in terms of the, the excellent programming that you and the staff offer, could you describe a little bit again about if this were to move forward, where and how we could continue to deliver those excellent services while this ground was being broken?
Sure, well, that goes kind of into the comment that Councilman Henan made, which is, the decision of the new facility, there's been two proposed locations. They're both in the same site area, but one proposed, and they're both relatively the same scope. But one is where our current building and ice arena is, and one is on the other side of the parking lot. So, obviously, the decision of where that's going to go is going to play a factor in what we can continue to do. If the decision is made to put it in the current location, obviously, operations would have to shut down for, for the time that the construction is being done. So, you're talking, again, 15, 16 months, that, that would have to cease unless another facility in the city was located, and we could have run some programs out of that. If the decision was made to put it in the other location just west of us, in, in the same site, but in a different location, I could see our, most of our programming continuing during that time, maybe when some of the heavy machinery was brought in, but for the most part, we would be able to continue. So, that, it kind of goes into that question, and, and we, and that hasn't been decided 100% yet.
Cool, thanks. And then my, my last question at the moment on this has to do with, once we are through the grand opening, and it's all amazing, it sounds like it's a little ways out, so presumably we would have time through the budget process to ensure that we have the necessary funds to actually operate a facility of this, of this, like?
Absolutely. So, a lot of that has already, you know, just in terms of, because people have asked those questions, operations, staffing, things like that. So, a lot of those things have already been thought about, but at, for sure, you know, you're not doing it completely, but if the bond is approved and, and if this goes through, that would be something we would start doing. And the timing is actually kind of nice, because November and December is really when we're starting to prepare for that next year's budget, and those numbers are being set February, March, and we're having those meetings. So, it would allow us to be able to look at, you know, utilities, operations, and, and really get those, those hard numbers and staffing. So, it, it absolutely would give us that time to, to do that before the facility's actually opened.
Great, thanks. And then, I guess, as a bonus question, I'm presuming that the communication strategy that you described for the prior element would also have, play a role in, in this approach as well. Is that anything you'd like to comment on that, other than probably yes?
It's, it's yes, it's, this is a yes plus. The Parks and Recreation Department has fantastic supporters, and they have a friends group that is committed to getting some messaging out on, on taking sort of a storytelling approach, and really talk about how it has potential to impact so many in our community. I think I've said in the past, two to 102. This is the kind of building that has something that suits you there, and getting that message out. So, this is a, this is a yes plus answer.
Nice. Thank you.
Additional comments on the community center? Anybody in the audience have any comments they'd like to, or questions? Okay, seeing none, it appears that we are set moving forward with the community center. Now, let's move on to City Hall. Mr. Baumgartner?
Yes, sir.
Would you like to read that one, please?
City Hall renovation bond proposal. Shall the city of Berkeley, Michigan borrow the principal sum of not to exceed $4,575,000, payable not to exceed 21 years from the date of issue, and issue its unlimited tax general obligation bonds to pay for the cost of acquiring, constructing, renovating, rehabilitating, furnishing, and equipping improvements to the existing City Hall and historic fire hall, including parking and site improvements. The estimated millage to be levied in 2019 is .2629 mils, or 26 cents per $1,000 taxable value, and the estimated simple average annual millage rate required to retire the bonds is .4865 mils, or 49 cents per $1,000 of taxable value. Yes or no?
Okay, City Hall, same questions? Are we comfortable moving forward? Are there any specific issues with the actual language? Questions? Comments? Councilmember Blanchard?
I think a, a general question about bond sales, and if, what the bond market looks like, and, and how, what our bond council's thoughts are on that, as far as being able to sell them, interest rates and that sort of thing. I would be interested in hearing.
Good evening. Bobby Benzinski from Benzinski and Company. We have projected right now interest rates of 4% on both transactions. If you were to go out in today's market, you would be looking at probably about 3, 3 and 1/4 in today's market. We've anticipated a sale in June of 2019. We think these are conservative estimates. As many of you know, the feds are pushing to raise interest rates. They did it last week at their last meeting. The tax code that was changed last December has forced interest rates up slightly. I think that many people will realize next July, March, July, when they file their tax return, what real impact that will have, and it could have an effect on interest rates. The city has a very favorable rating for AA, I think it is. We don't see it impacted right now, given all the economic indicators. So, given that rating, given the fact that this is the highest security that you could possibly have, an unlimited tax general obligation is the best security you could have in a municipal bond, there would be no issue in marketing these bonds, given all the conditions as they exist today.
Thank you.
Additional questions as it relates to City Hall?
Thank you. I don't know that I have a, a bond specific question, more about the community's intent and desire to, to move forward with this, so, but thank you for that answer. That was amazing. Just came up and nailed it, that was cool. So, I had the pleasure of chairing the, the ad hoc committee on looking at the City Hall renovation initiative, and with my colleague here, we, and another, we toured several City Hall facilities, those that had been recently renovated, and those that were in need of it. We learned a lot about the kinds of things that could go into it, and, and saw the potential value for what our city home could actually be. As you know, I'm also the liaison to the historical committee, which has its home inside of this facility as well, and they're very excited to see some type of potential for our city area and, and expanded museum offerings and things like that, to help educate and raise awareness with the community, which is super neat. And, I'd also like to say that our DDA, which I'll talk a little bit in the communications, has a design guidelines document that we had an opportunity to preview with Planning Commission. As part of that effort, some incredible conceptual ideas were put forth about this very location that I think are really worth exploring. And that's different than the work that we had done thus far. It was done in parallel to kind of see which way might, what these things might lead. The, the opportunity with the ideas that the DDA had provided include an option to explore public-private partnerships. I don't know, not to get into all of that kind of stuff, unless you guys can share more about that too, but public-private partnerships are a way in which the city, through the, the property ownership, can work with a private entity, company of sorts, where they would upfront the capital costs to, to build the things, and then there'd be an arrangement with leasing and things for us to be able to operate it, or be in part of it, without the capital outlay, basically. And so, so I'm actually pretty excited about what that path might offer to us, in terms of what, the amenities that, that this proposal would not be able to offer, both to our residents, to our employees who come here every day to work and serve the city as best as they possibly can, to first-time visitors, prospective homeowners. The kind of experience that we could offer with the vision that came out of the DDA design guidelines is compelling to me. So, very clear in support for the community center. I think that makes all the sense in the world. I'm not sure about the City Hall, because I think, I think there's a really good option just over the horizon that I'd like us to, to consider. So, that's where my head's at.
Thank you. Additional other comments?
Actually, Councilmember Baker, if we, I guess, or maybe whoever to answer this, but if we approve the wording and move forward as though it were going to be on the ballot, can we decide to take it off the ballot? If we want to go a different direction, like, as you mentioned, to explore a public-private partnership? Or if we say, yes, we're approving this, is it, like, that's it? It's on the ballot?
Up until the point that it's submitted to the county, you have the ability to rescind.
So, what point is that?
Once it's off to the county, it's going on the ballot.
So, that's August?
August 14th.
August 14th.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Just, we should remember to keep in mind that we have in the past explored public-private partnerships, and throwing the net out there, we haven't caught anything. So, I, you know, don't know, maybe with a different plan, we would, but maybe the city manager could explore, explain more about that.
Yes, sir. We, we did explore that with, with the former ice arena facility, looking for a partner and investing the capital costs. I think the condition of the building was prohibitive to a private entity, and, but it's, I think what Mayor Protem Baker has discussed is, would be a lot more enticing in the private sector.
I have personally struggled with three, asking the voters three separate questions in November. Now, the reasons that we discussed having them all in November was so that, you know, we, we had hopefully a better turnout and a better opportunity to really hear what the residents think. And the more that we look at it, and now with all the calculators, I'm just worried that, that it's an awful lot to ask our residents at one time. I think certainly there seems to be support for, for the community center question, for the infrastructure. Personally, I'm, I'm not, I'm not all the way there on tonight, saying, yeah, I think we're going to ask the residents for three separate things in November, on top of things that are beyond our control that are going to be on the November ballot, on top of some other things that are coming in August. I'm not saying it's not a priority, it certainly is. I, I have been talking to our DDA director and, and some other folks, and have, what I've heard to be very enticing, potential options that don't involve us having to ask the residents right now to, to put up any more money in the short term. I'm not saying it's not important, but I think the other two things that we've talked about are priorities right now, and I at least want to have a discussion with council and see where you guys sit individually, so that we can then make the decision to move forward, and then I'll, you know, accept the decision that we, that we have. So, with that in mind, feedback. Councilmember Stedman?
What would you say are the odds, possibilities that this P3, public-private partnership would work out?
Well, there's no, there's no guarantees for anything, obviously, but with a different team putting forth a different vision, a different net, so to speak, as was mentioned earlier, there seems to be some optimism that we didn't have going into the program before.
Right.
Plus, the work that we've done on this is excellent work. The input from the residents has been fantastic. The open house that was held here got a tremendous amount of feedback, up to and including, we should do more, with some of the comments from the residents at that session. So, we have an opportunity to explore that. And then to, to the thought around too much at the same time, this is excellent work that we can save if needed, come back next year for it, because if, if we do explore those things, you know, this, this building will still be here, and we can take another thoughtful conversation with the residents to see if it makes sense, to try that, having looked under this other, other avenue, to see if it makes sense. To, to my colleague's question about perhaps moving forward with this and then rescinding it, that's an interesting thought to kind of hedge the bet. My concern is that it may send mixed signals or confusion to folks to say, wait a minute, are we supposed to, are we not? It might provide some complexities to the communication efforts that will be ramping up pretty quickly on the other two initiatives. So, rather than having, being in this either-or kind of duality, I'd rather, I'd like to just say, yep, we're going with these two, and hold back on this one, explore that other avenue, knowing that, again, this is excellent work with tremendous feedback from, from employees, from visitors, from residents, that if and when it makes sense to revisit this next year or something like that, then we can move forward with confidence.
Thank you.
And I, I think I need to clarify, my comments earlier were not specifically around my personal thoughts. It's what residents have said. Look, you're asking for three things, that's a lot. I don't think they're all going to pass. And it makes a lot of sense when you, you talk about it in that perspective, with, we have three questions, other questions potentially that could be on a very long November ballot, something in August. It's just, it's a lot, and we understand that, and I understand that. And that's why the conversations that I've had, and, and they say, you know, look, we like, we'd like to have a new City Hall, but right now, in terms of priorities, it's the last one. And, and I understand that. And there are a lot of folks who work very hard, and there are a lot of folks who would work very hard moving through into November, and I want to have the support, at least for the residents who have said, yeah, we, we at least wanted to ask everyone these questions, and I'm not sure that I've heard it, at least on this item right now. Additional comments? Councilmember Henan?
Concerning a public-private partnership for this building, looking at the design guidelines, they were, the suggestion for the site, it was very attractive, very shiny, but starting to look deeper, it, they didn't seem to stand up to scrutiny. I know we're not wedded to those specific ideas or recommendations, but a lot was glossed over in the economic component of the analysis, that I think makes the likelihood of such a partnership on this corner parcel pretty low, is my feeling. I don't think it's likely that we're going to find something like we're wanting, and I think it's still the most prudent thing to move forward now with this. Even though I know it is highly likely not all three will pass, I'm fully aware of that, but I want to put it to the voters to let them tell us which are the most important. I've been surprised, talking to some people, I thought City Hall would be the last in the priority list, too, for many, and I was surprised that it's second, after roads and infrastructure, for a lot of people. Not everybody, but, you know, I was very surprised to find that. So, I really don't know which way it would go, but I think we should continue to put all three on in November.
Well, let's just take a, a quick straw poll here then, because, you know, we're either going to move with both of them or, or one of them at this point. I think we all have varying degrees of opinions and, and where we favor, so I'm just going to go around, we'll start with Councilmember Gavin. This is very simply, City Hall, yes or no?
At this point, I'm, I'm actually in, in agreement with Mayor Protem Baker. I think this offers a unique opportunity. This is a gateway to the city, this corner is, and so I think at this point, I would lean towards no, not putting City Hall on the ballot.
Okay. Councilmember Henan?
Yes.
Councilmember Dean?
I'm inclined to agree with council members Gavin and Baker, and exploring the other options, because I think that there are opportunities there to be looked at, so.
Mayor Protem?
Not at this time, no.
Councilmember Stedman?
I think I agree with, even though I was on that committee and went to all those City Halls.
Good insight.
I think that I would agree with Councilmember Baker, Mayor Protem Baker.
Councilmember Blanchard?
If you remember way back, we started this discussion, I was the one that said we should only have two on the ballot. And I got voted out, so, okay. But not, not for the reason of the design committee. I think that the design that was proposed would not work here. Would have to be a lot of tweaks, but there is a possibility. I mean, there, there is some stuff in that that could be done. So, I'm kind of leaning to taking it off the ballot now, while we research that, because I don't think that it's going to pass anyway. I think three of them, one of them is going to get knocked off, and I'd rather use the little bit of leverage we got with the DDA to see if we can't come up with something that would save us some money.
Okay.
Can I say one more?
Sure.
Okay. The other thing about putting both the City Hall and the community center and the roads all on at the same time, is one of them might, either the community center or the, the City Hall, might get voted out, and I would hate to see it be the community center.
I, I agree, and again, we probably do not want to see any of them voted down, but the reality of the situation, if there's three, maybe, the same thing if there's two. I mean, there's some that are just going to do one or the other, and then, and that's completely fine. My biggest fear with all of this is not that any of them are voted down based on their mayor, it's that they're voted down because there wasn't enough communication, they didn't understand enough about what the projects meant, what it looked like moving forward, what was going to be as a result of these votes. I have no issue with, with folks voting no, because they were informed, and it just doesn't make sense for them. make sense for them. That's completely fine. But if it fails and people say, yeah, we just didn't know enough about it, nobody told us what was going on, we had no idea, then that's a massive failure on our part. And that's what we need to avoid.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, just to highlight a point that kind of came up a little bit earlier, I think it's important to remember that the opportunity is still there. You know, this is something that can come back and come back frankly, in short order. This is not something where we have to wait four years for a development to slowly move its way through the process. You know, this is something that, quite frankly, like you said earlier, could come back next year. And I think the need is obviously there. I mean, it's, I think everyone thinks that's, you know, that's clear, but I just thought that was a point worth kind of highlighting again, that this does not have to be a long, drawn-out process.
Mr. Attorney. Point of order, since this is going to be changed, can we change that with an amendment or can we, do we have to vote this down?
I think you can, if someone wants to move to amend in order to authorize, or rather to authorize placement of one of the questions on the ballot, but to omit the other, I think that would be the appropriate subject of an amendment.
Okay. Is there such amendment?
I'll make such a motion.
I'll support it.
Protem made the amendment with support of council member Dean. Discussion on the amendment and the resolution is amended?
I just, I have one more point. I think that if there is a private partnership that could be explored, I think it's really our duty to the residents of the City of Berkeley to explore that. If we can take some of that burden off of the residents and share it perhaps with a private partnership, I think that we have a responsibility to do that. So I'm feeling very good about this. Thank you.
Okay. Additional comments or questions? Anybody else? Okay. Seeing none, Ms. Cipriani, would you please call the roll on R 2418 as amended?
Henin?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Ms. Cipriani, would you please read item number four on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M 4518, matter of considering the appointments to various boards and commissions.
Is there a motion to approve M 4518?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Blanchard with support. Councilmember Gavin, I tried to look over to my left very quickly to see who was saying. Mr. Baumgarten, we have quite a list in front of us.
Yes, sir. This is the time of year where we make appointments. Many of our boards and commissions, the appointees of those bodies, terms expire on July 1. So you have in front of you a sizable slate of various appointments. I can read them if you'd like.
Let's just take them, yeah, go through them one at a time.
Yes, sir.
I mean, just each board.
On your beautification advisory committee, you have Anella and Dan Mihayescu, both with terms expiring in July 1. So the appointment would be through 2021.
We are, the way that this motion is set up, we are either approving all or not. I mean, I assume we could make amendments if necessary. We have seen the list. Let's just run through, just go through everybody right now, just get them all out of the way.
Board of review, Thomas Byers with a term expiring July 1, 2022. Citizens Engagement Advisory Committee, Ms. Tammy Polk with a term expiring July 1, 2021. Your Downtown Development Authority Board of Trustees, Jennifer Finney, as first term as an at-large member with a term expiring in 2022. Razour Rahman, also a first-time appointee with a term expiring July 1, 2022. Your Environmental Advisory Committee with Brandon Alger with a term expiring July 1, 2021. Julie H. Goldsworthy with a term expiring in 2021, also July 1. All these are July 1, so I'm going to skip the July 1 part. Historical Committee, Ms. Wanda Mathis with a term expiring in 2021. Library Board, Carol Herrmann with a term expiring in 2023. Parks and Rec Advisory Board, Mike Kirby with a term expiring in 2021. Gary Polk with a term expiring also in 2021. Planning Commission, Marty Smith, or Martin J. Smith, sorry, Marty, with a term expiring in 2021. Matthew Trotto with a term expiring in 2021 as well. That would be a first-time appointee for Mr. Trotto. Public Safety Pension Board, James Smith, or Jim as we know him, in 2022. Tree Board, Lisa Fritsch, in 2021. Margaret Grassa in 2021, and Kathleen Carlos in 2021 as well. Zoning Board of Appeals, Mr. Paul Evans, in 2021. I do have a note to make on zoning board of appeals. There was an additional appointment that needs to be made that'll come before this body in July. That was an oversight clerically. I apologize.
There is, my understanding that there may be additional appointments coming as well, that we will finish the rest of them in July. But just looking on what we have on our agenda today, specific questions or comments related to any of this? Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Your Honor. What an impressive list. I mean, this is amazing. These are super cool people wanting to help the city or continue to help the city, and I'm so thankful to everybody here. From the DDA perspective, we're very encouraged to have these two folks on board. Historical Committee, just one minor correction. Her first name is actually Waneda. There's a W A N E D A is the first name. So the application has the correct spelling and stuff, so just more of a technical, just make sure we have it right in the form and all that kind of jazz. She has been a tremendous asset to the committee and I'm pleased to see her coming back as well. Thank you.
Okay. Additional comments?
He got my comment about the misspelling.
Oh, nice. Thanks for adding that back. That's awesome.
Councilmember Stedman?
I just want to mention that a lot of these appointments are people who have been on these committees and are choosing to be, you know, to come back and continue serving. And that's wonderful. Some people have been on boards for 15, 20 years and they keep wanting to come back. And an additional to new people that were getting involved.
Thank you. Councilmember Henin?
Yeah, just in general, one request for staff. If we could, next year, for reappointments, have attendance records and especially for the planning commission and the zoning board of appeals, any training they've received, you know, whether it's from the city or from bodies like MML or MSU, or even training as, you know, part of continuing education in their job. That would help just to make sure that those members are keeping up to date and, you know, everybody's fulfilling their side of the contract.
Okay.
Thank you.
Additional questions or comments? As Mayor Protem said, it is an incredible list. I know it looks long right now, but this is a time when, as the manager mentioned, a lot of terms are up. But even with such a prestigious list as the one that we have in front of us, there are additional openings on other boards. There are continuing to be additional openings on other boards and committees in the city. We have created at least one, potentially two, new boards today. I'm constantly looking to get our residents as engaged as possible, because at the end of the day, the reason we're able to do the things that we're able to do up here is because we have such great volunteers in our community. And it doesn't mean that they're just on these boards either. There's a number of folks who are very involved in other things and maybe it's not a technical appointment to the city, but we wouldn't be Berkeley without all of their support and all of their activity. So we certainly appreciate the dedication of everybody on this list and everybody else that helps our city run. Seeing no additional comments, Ms. Cipriani, would you please call the roll on M 4518?
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henin?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. And before we move on, you got Councilmember Henin's request. I don't think that is something that's difficult for us to manage.
No, and Councilmember Henin had requested that of staff and we were unable to provide it. So by next year, we should have a mechanism in place to do so.
Okay. Moving on, Ms. Cipriani, would you please read item number five on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M 4618, matter of authorizing the purchase of official Dream Cruise merchandise for a cost not to exceed $28,000. Funds for this expenditure will come from account 614-915-818000.
Is there a move to approve M 4618?
Motion to approve.
To approve. Support. Councilmember Stedman with support from Councilmember Blanchard. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will defer to our resident experts on the Dream Cruise and Cruise Fest, Parks and Recreation Director Teresa McCarleton.
Thank you, Mr. Baumgarten. I would like to also say that Mark Kuhn, our committee chair for the Cruise Fest Committee, was unable to be here tonight. You do have the memo from him. I did speak with him, obviously, before this, and we worked very closely in purchasing the merchandise and going over everything. This year again, we will be selling merchandise at the three booths that we run on Woodward for the weekend of August 17th and 18th. Dream Cruise officially is on August 18th, but we all know in Berkeley that Cruise Fest is the day before on August 17th. We'll also have a booth set up at 12 Mile and Robina, as we always do, and we will have our 12 Mile and Woodward booth set up starting on August 10th, and that will run the full week through. All of our booths are staffed by our community groups. The way that Berkeley is a bit unique in the way that we run our booths as opposed to other cities, and that is that the city purchases the merchandise and pays for the merchandise, and then the community groups staff the booths, and then the profits are divided between the city and those community groups, and it's broken out based on the hours that they serve. So it serves as a great fundraiser for the community groups, the city gets to sell their merchandise, and I think it's a win-win for everybody, and we've been very successful. Last year, we had a very successful year. It was the fifth or sixth highest in terms of margin of profit with merchandise. Selling merchandise and choosing the merchandise is always, you know, it's not a perfect science. Ford Motor Company is, again, the presenting sponsor for the Woodward Dream Cruise this year, so it will be a Ford car. Most likely, it's looking to be a Mustang. So obviously, sometimes Chevy people don't like that, but there's always an alternative shirt that you can buy and that we do have. You know, we're hoping for a good year and we're excited. And planning for Cruise Fest has been in full swing since early this year, and the committee works very hard on that. And Mark certainly has been doing this work very underpaid in that he's not paid at all for the last 20-plus years, obviously with a whole host of other people, including Cindy and on all of the committee.
Thank you. Important to note that it was $20,000 last year. It's the same number this year. There's been no change despite the success.
And if I can mention that we approved that amount, that doesn't mean that we always spend that amount. We actually spent less than that last year. We kind of spend a certain amount upfront, and then we can purchase merchandise as we go and we see what's needed, and I think that that's important to do, because every year, there is a certain amount of merchandise that is left over. Obviously, you want to get that number as small as possible while also giving people what they want when they are there.
Cruise Fest is coming quickly.
It is. Thank you, Your Honor, and thank you and to the committee for all their work with this. It is one of the signature events in the community, in the region, and I'm so happy that Berkeley has a strong presence and some great merch, too. I recall somehow, don't we break even by like that Friday or Thursday or Friday, and then it's all proceeds to be distributed after that? Isn't there something along those lines?
We typically break even by the Thursday before the event.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Typically, that Thursday is actually a really big night, depending on weather. Weather plays a huge factor. Two years ago, we got unlucky and we got rained out many nights, and that did hurt sales. But we typically have broken even by possibly even Wednesday or Thursday before the weekend occurs.
That's great. So that's all the much more benefit to the community groups that are involved, because it's that much more proceeds that go right to help them.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's fantastic.
Additional questions, comments as we prepare for the Cruise Fest? Seeing none, thank you, Ms. McCarleton, for your work and continued work on this. Ms. Cipriani, would you please call the roll on M 4618?
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henin?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Thank you.
Moving on, Ms. Cipriani, would you please read the next item on tonight's agenda?
Discussion, matter of discussing the pilot program regarding the keeping of backyard chickens.
We enacted an ordinance on a trial basis, and we are going to hear what's happened over the past 12 months almost.
I have a very long and detailed report on this. We had one person take advantage of the pilot program. They did have maintained a coop since pulling the permit and receiving it. We've had no complaints forwarded to city hall on the keeping of this chicken. We've had periodic inspections on the coop throughout the course of the pilot program that's been kept in clean order and working order. The, I would say, the coop owner has been very diligent in maintaining and meeting the standards of the city. They were previous, or I don't know exactly how you say it, but they'd owned chickens in a previous community before, so this was not their first attempt. Like I say, they were very good. It's a good kind of person that you want for the first run, but ultimately, it was one person out of all five, and it was somebody who actually was not new to this, but had it in a separate community. So ultimately, we did not have any other interest from residents on this, none that followed through with the permit. We get questions about it, but that's really about it, so.
Okay. So what is the next, what happens right now with the sunsetting?
So in the council's purview, they did see fit to make this a sunsetting provision in the city's ordinances, so the pilot project will come to a close on July 5 of this year. It is automatically sunsetting, so there's no action needed by the city council to end the pilot. The only action needed from city council would be to continue to make a ordinance provision that would allow for the continuation of this use. But other than that, then it's, it automatically ends the era of chickens in the City of Berkeley otherwise.
So we need to discuss as a council our intentions moving forward as it relates to chickens and the ordinance. We had extensive discussions about this prior to enacting the pilot program. You know, we spoke with a number of neighboring municipalities that have an ordinance similar to ours already, and what we heard pretty consistently was, we haven't had any complaints, we haven't had any complaints, we haven't had any complaints. Hearing that is nice, but we wanted to kind of see it on our own, how it would work in our community. And we had a number of inquiries, but only one actually pulled the permit. As the city manager mentioned, we had, you know, the routine inspections as laid out in the ordinance. Did not hear from any neighbors or residents regarding sound, smell, rats, all of the things that we spoke about and were concerned about prior to this program. So knowing that is where we're at right now, a couple of things I think we want to discuss. One is, are we going to get out of the chicken business? Are we going to allow it to continue? And if we do allow it to continue, is it now just open season, anything? Because, you know, we had five permits, we're eligible for the pilot program. We could certainly have more if we do not change any ordinance. Do we want to enact an ordinance for a first and second reading? Comments from the, I was going to make a terrible pun, but I decided I'd let Mayor Protem do that.
Yeah, I've got a couple myself. I think I've been a guy.
Yeah, yes. Councilmember Blanchard?
To keep, you know, people marching their chickens out of town down Ludward Avenue, I think that we should probably remove the sunset provision for this, and I would suggest that we keep it at five permits, so we don't overload the city with chickens. I don't think we will, but we don't want to branch of chicken shack here in the city, so. Sorry.
Is there any issue with that, Mr. Attorney?
No, there isn't.
Thank you. Additional comments? Councilmember Stedman? Councilmember Stedman?
I'm for keeping the ordinance, removing the sunset provision, and limiting it to five.
Okay. For Pro Tem?
Continuing the streak here. So I, too, am in favor of moving forward with this. I am glad to hear that demonstrated responsible ownership has led to, you know, a vibrant scene here with this one example, anyway. And so I have a technical question in terms of timing and all of that. I don't believe we meet again before July 5th, so would there be some way to extend, given that there is one instance here in the city already, and if this were to expire before we have the opportunity to do a first and second reading, is that goose cooked? Or is it, or can we, see? It wasn't very punny. So is there, how would we handle that to ensure that there's continuity for folks who, by every way you can look at it, they've done the right thing, they've taken this very responsibly? What I wouldn't want to do is put them in peril while we just administratively do the proper diligence to make it, you know, make it going forward. So any thoughts on how we can help keep it going? Mr. Attorney?
Well, let's talk turkey about that.
Oh, man.
Sorry.
That was a subtle joke.
Yeah, it was a foul joke.
Oh, I can't even stand it.
I, I.
I would suggest, because I think the intention of the city manager would be, if this was, if we're, if I'm sensing, correctly sensing the trend here, that we would not want to create a gap where something's legal, then illegal, then like, I think if the council were to make a resolution this evening, given direction to, you know, continue the ordinance with the modification, eliminate the pilot program, and just make it a permanent ordinance with the five limitation, the number five being the limitation, I think you could add to that motion and hereby requesting the, or directing the city manager to allow the current chicken coop to continue while the city is in the process of processing the ordinance change.
Thank you. Got all that?
I do, yep, and we've heard from this wing, so now let's hear about it.
Oh, no.
More like one of the feathers.
I can't with you. I'm saying nothing jokingly chickenish. And I agree with what's been said.
Thank you.
My inclination is to let it lapse, that there just hasn't been that much interest expressed. While there hasn't been nuisance problems or neighbor complaints, there always is that potential down the road. We do mitigate that, keeping it at five, but I, there just hasn't been the interest. And I don't like putting, you know, extra things on the books. I would not want to punish the existing permit holder for trying out the pilot program and then taking away the chickens, and I would absolutely support that they can, you know, keep their chickens now with, you know, under the current, you know, provisions until they let the permit lapse or until it's violated. But my inclination is to let it expire.
Councilmember Gavin?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would say that I'd be in favor of, I guess at this point, the way I think about it is that this was exactly the point of having a pilot program, to find out exactly, you know, what potential pitfalls there are, you know, find out how it's going to interact with other residents. So my inclination is to do exactly what's been said by previous council members.
Yeah, so I think that Councilmember Pennant's point is certainly a salient point, that we come across things all the time, laws that have been on the books or that were on the books, at one point that are still on the books in many, many places that are absolutely ludicrous to think about. However, when I also look at backyard chickens and where that seems to be moving, I don't see that necessarily as a trend that's going away right now. I think that's at least pointing to be continuing, at least for the next period. And with that in mind, I am inclined to continue the ordinance, remove the sunset, but I certainly want it limited. I don't want, I don't think we just, because we have responsible owners and we have owners of animals, pets, whatever, that are not as responsible. And I think limiting it to five will ensure that the folks who are applying for those permits and understand what the inspections are going to be like and the high standards that we have set forth in this ordinance, and the expense that goes into a chicken coop, it's especially based on what we require. It's not something that is economically efficient, maybe, to do. I am comfortable moving forward with the ordinance without the sunset and a limit of five. So we've heard from council. If somebody would like to make that motion, I'm not going to stop them. If nobody makes that motion, then it will lapse.
I'll make the motion, I don't have the exact language in my head, it's been a few council members since we last heard it, but to direct the city attorney to work with city manager and staff to put such provisions in place that the ordinance be continued with no sunset, keeping the cap of five, with the potential to give updates to council on some periodic basis to help ensure that things continue. So I'm going to add a little wringer in there, see if that makes sense to you guys, with some kind of report back, just to make sure that things continue as well as they have thus far. So all of that is some kind of a motion right there. It's some kind of motion.
Forgot to cover the existing chickens.
I think that's part of like keeping the ordinance intact, right, and removing the sunsets, isn't that, oh, and then with the extension, thank you, with the bridge language to ensure, yes, the bridge language to ensure that the existing applicant and permit holder can continue, continue their fine work. Thank you.
Is that clear, Ms. Cipriani? Clear-ish?
Clear, clear-ish, yeah.
Appreciate that. That's what we strive for. Is there support for?
Yes.
That amendment? There is support. With that, so we only have a discussion on the table today, so we are voting on the motion, does not have a number, by Mayor Pro Tem. Ms. Cipriani, would you please call the roll?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Pennant?
No.
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Ms. Cipriani, would you please read item number seven on tonight's agenda?
Resolution number R. 2518, matter of authorizing participation in the Oakland County West Nile Virus Expense Reimbursement Program.
Is there a motion to approve R. 2518?
Move to approve.
Support.
Move to approve, I saw that.
Got to keep you on the.
Councilmember Gavin, with support from Councilmember Pennant. Mr. Baumgartner, or Mr. Director, Mr. Schuler, you want to handle this?
Sure. Good evening. So this is a usual item we bring before you each year. Oakland County basically provides a partial reimbursement for mosquito larvicide. So each spring, we put larvicide in the 1,600 catch basins throughout the city, and that's for the Culex mosquito specifically, and it basically helps to keep those populations down and thus help us out with respect to West Nile. So again, this is a partial reimbursement. This doesn't cover the full cost of the product, but it certainly helps, and we'd like to continue participation, and this is a requirement that we have to submit before the end of the month. Happy to answer any questions.
How do we know which basins we've hit?
So we mark, we mark the basins. I'm sure everybody has maybe even seen those by now. We're just about done placing all of those briquettes, we like to call them, into the basin, so you'll see orange marks at the basins. I want to be clear, there's also orange marks that get placed for mistig related to communication lines, and that has been a confusion point in the past, but if you look closely, you'll get a sense of it. It's usually a tick mark right above the catch basin and then also on the sidewalk as well, and again, it's orange.
Right, that was, that was the leading question, I'm sorry.
I could sense that.
Why they have orange on their sidewalk, and why does it have to be orange, because it stays there forever or for a long period of time? Are there any alternatives that are applicable and get the job done aside from the current spray paint?
Orange marks? You know, this is something we've used for some time. It really, and the reason we put it on the sidewalk as well is because during rain events as well, it helps us determine where those locations are of those catch basins, even in the wintertime. They become useful during water main breaks, when you have snow and the sidewalks are cleared, we're able to locate those. So we do want to see them, and it is important for us to locate them both at the basin and as a sidewalk as well. We could certainly change colors. We've changed colors over the years as well. And I know, it stands out, but we found that the orange tends to work well for us, so.
Thank you. Additional questions? Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. Based on doing, as I asked Mr. Schuler earlier today, we've been pushing rain barrels. Do we need something like this for rain barrels? And Derek was kind enough to research this and got back to me, and there is a product that you can get on Amazon, and it's recommended for rain barrels. So if you have a rain barrel that the mosquitoes can get in, it should be used, and there's two types Derek provided, the one about, is available on Amazon, and I went online and also found out that Home Depot sells them for rain barrels. They're called mosquito dunks. So if you have a rain barrel and you think mosquitoes can get in that, it would be appropriate, while we're doing the catch basins, to put this larvicide in your rain barrel to help eliminate mosquito problem in the city. Thank you.
Seeing no additional questions. Oh, I lied, I did look around, but nobody put their hand up. They wanted to sneak up on me.
That's me, I'm like that. Thank you for preparing this again for us. I know it is an annual event. Is there any rationale to the reimbursement amount? I noticed it kind of fluctuates. The last few years, it's been around 1920, but then it went up and then it's back down. Is there, is it based on volume? Is it based on surpluses at the county level? Can you?
Yeah, sure, it is based on population and lane miles is how they determine it, and the only explanation we've received for the bouncing is just that they had, they being the county, had extra funds that year to apply towards it, so it's as simple as that. Otherwise, it is a strict calculation based on lane miles and population.
Thanks again.
Any additional questions or comments? Seeing none, Ms. Cipriani, would you please call the roll on whatever motion we're on?
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Pennant?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Thank you. Ms. Cipriani, would you please read the next item on our agenda?
Motion number M. 4718, matter of authorizing the completion of design services for the Coolidge Highway Water Main Extension Project in an amount not to exceed $35,500 from Water Sewer Engineer Account 592-536-821000. Work to be performed by the city's engineering firm, Hubble, Roth &amp; Clark.
Is there a motion to approve M. 4718?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilmember Dean.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Blanchard. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you recall, from our rate, water and sewer rate conversation back in the previous budget year, we talked about the need to do a lot more capital projects and to fund those capital projects through the rates. This is the first year we have a bank in place based on the revenues we receive from those rate increases, and so this is our, enhanced investment into our water infrastructure. This is a project that has been called for for a number of years based on our water quality study, and so Derek has been working with HRC on plotting out this as part of our capital improvements project for our water, our water main network, so.
Derek?
Thank you. So this is a project that we've been eyeing for some time, and this is essentially completing a water main loop, if you will, on Coolidge Highway north of 12. So from 12 Mile up to Webster, we currently have a dead-end water main on the west side of Coolidge in that area, so we want to extend that water main through the Western Green Belt all the way up to Webster and connect back into the water main at Webster. So this will serve really two functions. First and foremost, it improves the fire flows on the northern section of town, which is something we've been looking to do, so it's an obvious choice for that. We don't have a ton of road impacts with this particular project. We're able to work in that Western Green Belt. There will be a little bit of pavement work on each end, but it's not as though we're putting the water main under the road or anything like that, so Coolidge Highway will be, it will not change essentially, so that is a newer pavement out there, so that's a good thing. And then the other benefit is, we do have that existing dead end that's on Coolidge that you constantly have to maintain and flush those hydrants when you have dead-end mains, so you don't really want the dead-end sections, you want to be able to loop those mains. So those are the two primary reasons for the project, and we're looking forward to starting this thing off and having a successful water main job.
Okay. Questions regarding the project explanation that we just heard? Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. Looking at the drawing, I see that you're going to take out the eight-inch line, or abandon the eight-inch line, the published line, just for everybody's information, according to this, and I think that's correct, there are no fire hydrants north of Edwards to Webster. So if we were to have a major truck fire on that stretch of highway, we would have one tank, one truckload of water, and then we'd have to string the supply line over the fence and up to the next street in order to get water, because there's nothing, nothing close. So this will provide us much better access to water for firefighting, and it was proposed, I think I saw, three valves and five hydrants. I think that would be, hydrants would be a great addition to that, provide us much better fire safety.
And there's an extra tapping sleeve valve in there, too, councilmen, too, so technically, per the estimate, there's actually four gates, if you want to look at it that way, but, and we'll look at that closer, whether it needs to be five or four, we'll take a closer look. And it is a 12-inch main, and I didn't specifically say that, so this is a new 12-inch main, so for these larger road jobs, this, our skeleton network, we want this to be a 12-inch main, so this will be a larger size main as well.
Thank you. Additional questions, comments?
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you for preparing this for us. This covers the initial study and the prep work, right? The actual construction costs would be a subsequent item that we would consider?
That is correct. So for construction projects, we bring the design proposal to you, and at which point then, after that, HRC starts the design process, permitting, et cetera, and then we come back before you, once we've taken bids, public bids, and then recommend the contractor. So you'll see us again before that hits. This will also line us up with the best bidding time of the year, which is always late, late season, early season, so that a contractor, so we get the best unit prices. That's worth its weight, and that's something we always should be looking at. It doesn't always happen that way. We're not always able to dictate that, but in this case, we will be, so it always feels good to be bidding the job when you have the most interest.
Nice, and thank you. One last question. So we share Webster with Royal Oak. Do they have any involvement or engagement in this project, or is it strictly on our side, so to speak?
From a strict standpoint, yeah, the center line, you know, south is ours, north is theirs, but we will most definitely keep them abreast of the project. We've done it in the past when we resurfaced Coolidge, I made sure to send them the information about the project, the schedule, timelines, et cetera, so we will definitely keep them informed.
Thank you.
Should this move ahead tonight, just for everybody watching, this, the proposed schedule estimates completion in August of 2019, assuming, you know, there's a number of steps along the way. Construction actually would begin spring, summer of 2019, and it would be done by the end of, by August.
Eddie, you want to speak to the schedule?
That's correct, yes. The project itself would take anywhere from four to six weeks, so once the project starts, and I know the focal point is to always get a project done, or at least mostly clear it up before Cruise Fest, so that is the intent, again, to start in sometime late spring and then have it completed in plenty of time before the cruise.
Yeah, that was my question. Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you both for being here. Ms. Cipriani, would you please call the roll on M. 4718?
Gavin?
Yes.
Pennant?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Ms. Cipriani, would you please read item number nine on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M. 4818, matter of establishing an ad hoc committee of the city council for the purpose of reviewing the emergency operations plan.
Is there a motion to approve M. 4818?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilmember Blanchard. Support?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Gavin. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Introduced this briefly, but I'm sure Councilmember Blanchard would like to weigh in on it. The council, city council can only, is not permitted under charter to create standing committees, and therefore, ad hoc committees for specific purposes are more appropriate. This one in particular, it is time to review the city's emergency operations plan to make sure it is consistent with that of Oakland County's, and so the, while staff has also been working on this, it's appropriate to set up a ad hoc committee for the city council to likewise work on this document as well, so.
Led, I'm sure, by Councilmember Blanchard. Councilmember Blanchard?
Yes. Yes. The new Oakland County plan is six hundred and seventy-nine pages long, and we got to make sure that our plan dovetails with their plan. So it's going to take more than one set of eyes just to go through it and make sure we haven't missed anything. The plan we've got now is good, but the problem is Oakland County's changed the way they wrote their plan. They went from a regular plan format to an ESF format. So what I'm proposing is that we go to probably a modified ESF format in our plan, and that's emergency services functions, and there's eighteen of them. So looking for some help, I think that we could go through this and clarify the plan and make it good for another four or five years until FEMA or the county or the state changes the rules again.
Thank you, Councilmember Blanchard. This is obviously critically important, and we need to make sure that we are taking care of every, all of the residents, taking care of all the staff, and have emergency plans in place for anything that may come our way. The last thing we want to do is be reactive, we want to be proactive and have strategies, solutions, tactics, and a streamlined chain of command moving down. This committee will be comprised of Jack Blanchard, who shockingly will be the chair. Councilmember Dean and Councilmember Gavin will be the other members of this ad hoc committee, unless they have objections, and maybe you do now that he said there's one hundred and some pages.
Six hundred and forty-seven.
Good, good.
Yes.
Perfect. Seeing none, thank you for, Councilmember Blanchard, for getting this moving, Mr. Baumgartner and staff for moving with this. Ms. Cipriani, would you please call the roll on M forty-eight eighteen?
Henan?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Ms. Cipriani, would you please read item number ten on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M forty-nine eighteen. Matter of establishing the technology advisory committee.
Motion to approve M forty-nine eighteen?
It would be my pleasure to make such a motion.
May by Mayor Pro Tem. Support?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Henan. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you recall, we have the ability to, the city council has the ability to establish committees, and much like we did with our citizens engagement advisory committee, we bring before you now a technology advisory committee that would be made up of seven residents, one member, one ex officio member of council as the liaison, and then staff support would be myself and our IT coordinator, Stan, you know, Stan the man. But we're excited about starting this group. I think, you know, we talked about so much of our, the volunteerism of our boards and commissions. This is, those boards and commissions keeping up with the changing times, and I think this is, this is the brainchild of Mayor Pro Tem, Baker. I think it's absolutely spot on, and I look forward to working with the body if it's approved this evening.
Additional comments on the proposed technology advisory committee?
Just one quick thought, Your Honor. Thank you. Yep, what I'm excited about with this is twofold. First, the ways tapping into the talent within our community to help the city use technology to provide better services and offerings to our residents. You know, there's many ways that we can leverage technology that haven't been tapped yet. And secondly, ways that we can apply technology internally as part of city operations. So technology can serve a lot of purposes, to streamline, for cost savings, for timeliness, accuracy, and a higher quality experience. And so a committee such as this, comprised of residents from across the city that have an interest and an inclination to understand and study technology and think about how to apply that in those two directions, right? Inward facing towards the city and outward facing towards the residents and their businesses. I think we stand to gain a whole lot from the work with this, and I'm very thankful for this, for the work of staff and for Stan's support, bringing this to the council here tonight.
Additional comments, questions? Councilmember Stedman?
I just wanted to say that this is really a good thing because we took, or the council and administration took one committee that was not functioning at all, the communications committee, and made it into community engagement in technology, which, you know, kind of separates it. They're related, but yet separate, and I think that's wonderful.
Additional comments? Councilmember Henan?
Yeah, I think with the addition of this board, we're now going to have seven additional vacancies to fill. So I think it might be a good idea, this might be a good general practice, especially as we come towards July, but, you know, if the city could publicize what vacancies we have open, so people are aware of what positions are available and where to apply.
Mr. Baumgartner?
I was only going to note that if approved this evening, we would spend the next month advertising these vacancies and bring back to you a slate of proposed members for council's approval.
Okay. Thank you. Seeing no additional questions or comments, Ms. Cipriani, would you please call the roll on M forty-nine eighteen?
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Ms. Cipriani, would you please read item number eleven on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M fifty eighteen. Matter of appointing the communications coordinator, Jay Grossman, as the City of Berkeley's representative to the Community Media Network Public Access TV Board of Trustees for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand and eighteen, and to instruct the city clerk to send a copy of this motion to the CMN TV board.
Is there a motion to approve M fifty eighteen?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilmember Blanchard.
Support.
Support from Mayor Pro Tem. Mr. Baumgartner and I would ask you if there's any explanation, but I'm pretty sure we just heard it relatively clearly.
It's a very well-written motion.
I don't know that there's anything additional that you want to add.
No, sir.
Seeing none, any councilmembers have any problems with Jay being our appointee? Seems to make sense, given his role. Ms. Cipriani, would you please call the roll on M fifty eighteen?
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Ms. About, oh, see, there it was. Ms. Cipriani, would you please read item number twelve on tonight's agenda? I missed one.
I made it all the way down to the.
Missed one.
Resolution number R twenty-six eighteen. Matter of authorizing an amendment to the fiscal year two thousand and eighteen, or two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen operating budget.
Is there a motion to approve R twenty-six eighteen?
Motion to approve.
Councilmember Stedman?
Support.
Support. Councilmember Gavin? Look at you, you got it. Mr. Baumgartner, would you like to discuss this, or should we hand it over to our finance director?
It'll be a hybrid model. I'll introduce this first, saying that this is a routine for us, for city's administration to bring to city council updates to the operating budget, noticing that this is the seventeen eighteen budget, which is coming to a close at the end of this month. June thirtieth is the end of our fiscal year. So if you hear us shouting Happy New Year on July one, it's because it's a fiscal New Year only. We're not just that far off. But, so we, the attempt here is to, this will be the last update to the current fiscal year. We traditionally brought these to the city council in August, after sixty days past the close of business for this operating budget, but we're trying a different model to where we actually close it out within the actual fiscal year itself. I think it's more consistent with accounting principles. So as far as the nuts and bolts go, I will introduce our, I don't know how long we can call you the new finance director for, but Ms. Ginger Burke Miller will take you through the document.
Good evening. As you've seen in your agenda packet, there's a memorandum that I've written to Mr. Baumgartner with regard to some budget amendments, and the first couple of them relate to the Downtown Development Authority. These were passed by their governing body on June thirteenth. I don't know if you want me to go through each one.
I would just kind of go, you know, we obviously have this, so the residents understand, okay, we're talking about the DDA here, here's what the changes were.
Right. We're increasing market analysis by twenty thousand dollars, taking that out of their fund balance. This was budgeted at twenty-five thousand in the previous year, in the two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen year, and only five thousand of it was spent at that time, and so this is a carryover from the previous year. Another item their governing body approved for seven members to go for training, and at that time it was approved, but there was not a budget amendment formally adopted. So we're just cleaning that up and increasing those line items, taking, increasing it by sixty-nine hundred dollars and taking that out of fund balance. Major streets and local streets, both of them, winter maintenance was affected this year due to the need for frequent salting during our prolonged winter. As most of you remember, it went a little bit further into April than what we're used to. And so we're increasing program supplies by thirty-eight thousand dollars that relates to salt. The original budget that was requested was sixty-three thousand, whereas the original amount that was adopted was thirty thousand, and we're taking that out of fund balance. Local streets, same situation, program supplies were increasing by six thousand. Equipment rental, that's use of the city vehicles, that increased by sixteen thousand, and we're taking that out of fund balance. The court building fund, this is a very small amount, but we still need to do this. Bank charges, we need to increase that line by two hundred dollars, we're taking that out of fund balance. Eleven mile road bonds, again, this is a small amount, paying agent fees on the bonds was an additional hundred dollars, and so it was slightly higher than what we had anticipated when we put the budget together, and so we're taking that out of their fund balance. The arena, we are increasing utilities by twenty-six thousand, part-time employees increasing by four thousand, and transfers in increasing by thirty thousand. That's a net effect of zero because we have a transfer in of thirty thousand. The transfer in would be from the general fund, we would have a transfer out of general fund for thirty thousand, and it would affect general fund's fund balance by thirty thousand.
I'm going to stop you just for a second. I just want to make a note that most, many of these costs are associated with hosting Berkeley Days, so it's not, there are no activities other than that within, happening within the arena that's purely tied to Berkeley Days.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's okay. And then we have, under recreation revolving, the youth camp, the revenue has been highly successful, and we're going to increase the revenue by forty-five thousand dollars. We're going to increase contractual services by fifteen thousand, overtime by five hundred, part-time employees by thirteen thousand five hundred, and it would actually increase the fund balance by sixteen thousand. Continuing under recreation revolving, community center use, part-time employees increased by twenty-six hundred, FICA increased by five hundred, and that would be a decrease in the fund balance by thirty-one hundred dollars. This relates to costs that were incurred being higher than originally anticipated. Miscellaneous programs, again, under revolving recreation fund, part-time employees increased by two thousand five hundred fifty, FICA increased by two hundred, HDLO increased by three hundred and fifty, and then fund balance would decrease by thirty-one hundred. This relates to employee costs that were incurred, but due to an oversight was not included in the original budget. And then fringe benefits, there is a fund called Fringe Benefits. Investment earnings revenue increased by two thousand six hundred, FICA increased by three thousand, HDLO increased by one hundred, annual leave increased by fifty-five thousand, and then fund balance decreased by fifty-five thousand five hundred. This relates to employer obligations for compensated absences incurred as a result of staff turnover. Those are all the items that either myself or department heads have identified for the current fiscal year.
Questions on any of the budget amendments that we are looking at, any of the items today? Our finance director did a great job of detailing what they were and how they meant, and from a internal standpoint, I thought the memo was actually pretty easy to follow. I appreciated that, the format, and, you know, it changes depending on who was in your office, but it was very easy to read and pretty concise, and I appreciated that, so thank you. Seeing no additional questions or comments, Ms. Cipriani, would you please call the roll on R twenty-six eighteen?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Ms. Cipriani, would you please read the next item on tonight's agenda?
Communications?
Who is up first? You can actually pick, I guess. If you don't have fun.
Dean.
Okay. You are the winner, thank you.
So, I have a Parks and Rec update. The senior picnic was last Thursday, and it was a huge success. Everybody had a blast. Summer fest in the Totlot Event is June nineteenth from five to seven at Totlot Park. Water play, so wear your swimsuits, or not. Bubbles, snow cones, face painting, and more. All are welcome, and the event is free to everyone. Community garage sale is June twenty-second through the twenty-third, and there's a list of homes and a map available online or at Parks and Rec, the library and city hall, beginning six twenty. The maps and the list. Storytime in the park is July twelfth at ten AM in J.C. Park. Summer Fest J.C. Jamboree, July nineteenth at J.C. Park. Tie dye, ice cream, bouncers, face painting, and more. All are welcome, and the event also is free to everyone. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Councilmember Henan?
Yeah, from the tree board, they hope to have the new tree code before us in the July meeting. It's tentative, but that's the hope. And I've heard from a lot of residents about all the trees that they see coming down, and, you know, just wanted to let people know that, you know, it's, a lot of the silver maples throughout the city are, you know, at the end of their life and really do need to come down for the safety and welfare of all of us. But before any of them do come down, there is an arborist that looks at them to make sure that the tree really does need to come down, so we aren't unnecessarily taking down trees. But I use that as a segue to remind that we have the tree program still in full swing, and it's your chance to, if you're going to miss those trees, to help and start to replace our stock in the city. And those applications, or those are due on August seventeenth, Cruz Fest Day, and the tree board's next meeting is on July ninth, and then the environmental advisory committee meeting, their next meeting is on June twenty-eighth.
Councilmember Gavin?
Thank you, Your Honor. So Coolidge Task Force met, had a couple of points of discussion, one being a proposed route for fiber optic cable. We're also waiting on the Beaumont traffic study, and then had a couple of discussion points on the TIA traffic study as well. And then the planning commission has not met since our last city council meeting, so that'll actually be next Tuesday, the twenty-sixth, at seven thirty. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem?
Awesome, thank you. A couple of quick updates. The historical committee wants to thank everybody that visited their booth at Berkeley Days, and also for those who saw them at the Art Bash, and their work continues to create new and interesting exhibits in our museum. If you haven't had a chance to visit it lately, come on in and see what's new about our history, if that is making sense. From a DDA perspective, as mentioned earlier, there was a design guidelines review discussion with council and planning commission last week's Monday, very encouraged by the structure of the design guidelines and the process by which it was socialized and vetted throughout our community. Think of it as a very visual guide around how our downtown can and should look over time. So it, as a vision guiding type of document, what it does not do is prescribe, do this here, do that there, but rather what it does is offer guidance around certain situations and things to do and things to not do, to help advance the field that we want to develop and grow here in our community. If you are interested in looking at those, those are available on our DDA website, which is downtownberkeley.com. There is a comments and feedback section on that page, so you can offer your additional thoughts and suggestions on the design guideline material. And so I look forward to hearing your additional thoughts on that as well. There is a comments and feedback section on that page, so you can offer your additional thoughts and, and suggestions on the design guideline material. And so, I look forward to, to hearing your additional thoughts on that as well. Thank you and congratulations to Rob Inesko, who has served admirably as the DDA Board Chair. He has stepped down, and we want to welcome Andy Gilbert from the Berkeley Eyewear and Local Sunglasses, who is the new DDA Chair moving forward. So, that's exciting, to get his continued leadership to help guide and steward the, the Board going forward. And let's see, there, from on the business side, there's a business meet and greet event tomorrow for business owners on the second floor of Berkeley Common. Yes, there is a second floor of the new Berkeley Common, which they're slowly rolling out for different events, and this is one of those for business owners to get together and talk shop. Again, if that, if I can stretch my puns here a little further. And finally, it was the, I believe it was the great Whitney Houston who once sang, "I believe the children are our future. Teach them well and let them lead the way. Show them all the beauty that they possess inside." It's okay, you got the point. So, where I was going with that is, the school's out, kids are out, neighborhoods are vibrant, kids are everywhere playing, it is an awesome time, and I would like to thank and commend those residents that have bought these little things and put them in their yards. You may, you may be able to see this. It actually has a name. It is called a Slowman. So, you know, you have snowmen in the winter, and you have slowmen in the summer. So, these are important, and it's, it's sad that we need them, but I'm glad that we have them. It's sad that we need them because there continues to be a lot of folks that, that think our side streets and, and tree-lined neighborhoods are expressways to get wherever they want to go. There seems to be very excessive paces, and I'm glad that the residents recognize the need to ensure that they and their kids are, are safe and protected. So, if you see these, let this be a positive reminder of why we want to slow down, because, you know, children are our future, right? And as we think about what we can do to help protect them and protect ourselves and protect our community, take it easy out there, enjoy this summer, be safe, and, and thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Steadman?
I was kind of hoping you were going to sing that.
You don't want me singing that, uh-uh.
All right. The Beautification Committee did not meet in June. They will be, be meeting next on July 11th, and at that time, we'll set the date to beautify the second bus stop on Woodward. The Library Board, there's a few programs left at the library for the month of June. I'll go over a couple of them, or some of them. Every linear mile Detroit by bike, this sounds really interesting. Somebody has filmed by bike, riding all around Detroit, and that is going to be Tuesday, June 26th at 6:30. Also, Tuesday, June 26th, at 2:00 p.m. is Arts and Scraps, and that will, okay, start with an ice cream carton and make it into something wonderful, okay? Monday, June 18th, you miss the Ice Cream Social. Wednesday, June 27th, Sounds Like Science. Saturday, June 23rd at 11:00 a.m., Kidding Around With Ghosts, or Goats, I'm sorry, not ghosts, goats. Read to a Dog, Saturday, June 30th at 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Bring your kids, and they can, if they're a little bit shy about reading, they can read to a dog. And that actually really does work. The Citizens Engagement Advisory Board is meeting again on June 27th. It's a dynamic committee. They're very, very excited to get going in terms of generating ideas for ways to communicate lots of things to the community, anything that, you know, and what we want is ideas from everyone, what this committee wants. Jay Grossman is, is the contact person on, in the administration for this committee. So, if you have any ideas of how you would like to receive information, there's a lot of people, if you don't have internet, if you don't have, you know, don't take a newspaper, what, how do you get your information? How would you like to get your information in a timely fashion? And that's what this committee needs to know, so that we can disseminate information for the city. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just like to say that Berkeley Art Bash was a great success, thanks to all the volunteers. They had a great crew down there. I also want to thank our DPW crew, especially Foreman Sean Young. They did an outstanding job setting up all the traffic control, all the extra trash barrels at the event, cleaning the street afterwards. We're very lucky to have such a dedicated DPW crew. They, they do a fantastic job. Since this is art city, the next art event will be the Street Art Fest on June 14th. That's the chalk art and mural fest, where they'll be doing, they plan on doing five murals, and they'll be doing chalk art on both Dorothea, east of Coolidge to the alley, and on Franklin, east of Coolidge to the alley.
July 14th.
Oh, June, excuse me. July 14th. I can't even read it here. So, there'll be chalk art in the parking, parking lanes of Coolidge and in Dorothea and Franklin. There'll be food vendors set up, there'll be music. It'll be a pretty interesting event. Coolidge will be closed down from Wiltshire to Catalpa from 0600 to 200 hours. For you civilians, that's 6:00 in the morning till 8:00 at night. So, we, I'll have to notify all our local ambulance services and police and fire that they will not be able to go to Beaumont by that route. But it should be a very interesting event. I think they had two professional chalk artists coming, and hopefully a lot of amateurs that are going to do some fantastic chalk art, and at least five murals, we hope, so.
Thank you. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Building on the, the praise for DPW, I think we, a lot of us saw the, the images from Houghton County, the flooding that they had up in the northern part of the states. This year, our Berkeley DPW was awarded the Humanitarian of the Year, and just furthering the, the reason why they earned that is, I had a couple of guys from the DPW today actually say, you know, how can we go help? Can we send some machinery? What can we do to help our, our friends and our neighbors in, in Houghton County? So, absolutely every day, the DPW lives up to the designation of, of Humanitarian of the Year. They're just absolute classic gentlemen with, with hearts bigger than the machinery that they operate, so, good men all. We also wanted to thank Roseanne Nicolai and all the volunteers and everybody that made the Art Bash such a great time. And then also, my next chat with Matt's actually going to be a focused chat with Matt. Myself and the Parks and Recreation Director, Trish McCarleton, are going to be visiting Oxford Towers and do a specialized senior-style chat with Matt. That's July 16th, for anybody from Oxford Towers who is watching this evening. And that's all I have.
Mr. Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This being the last meeting before Independence Day, I thought it'd be appropriate to put out a reminder or a public service announcement regarding the use of fireworks. They have been legalized to some degree in Michigan a few years back, but it's not, it's not the Wild West. They aren't completely unrestricted. Fireworks for the Fourth of July are permitted only on Independence Day itself, and the day before, and the day after. I believe Independence Day falls on a Wednesday this year, so we're talking about Tuesday through Thursday. And on those days, they are prohibited to be used after midnight. Also, they can only be used on your property. They cannot be, or they can be used on your property, or on property you have permission to use them on. You can't just go onto public property, parks, schools, anything like parking lots, or your neighbor's property certainly, unless you have their, their permission. And fireworks cannot be used by children under the age of 18. I think the main thing to remember is everybody try to be, be safe and responsible about it, and hopefully respectful of your neighbors and their sensitivities as well to the, and their pets, to the, to the loud noise.
Thank you. You guys did a wonderful job covering everything that I was going to mention, especially the fireworks, because we've already heard them. I'm sure residents have already heard them going off, and it's a little ridiculous. Art Bash, certainly thanked everybody. One thing I didn't hear, Lids for Kids was an absolutely tremendous event as well last Saturday. And Oakland County came in with a helicopter, then not only landed and took off, and we saw video, and kids got to go and, and play in there. And it was, it was a great event, and the kids got bike helmets, so the, the point of it is to be safe. Despite a little bit of rain here and there, it was still an absolutely tremendous event. Today, Public Safety had their golf outing, which will support the next future Lids for Kids. It was a very warm day out there. It was warm. Fortunately, it fell on a council meeting day, which meant some of us had to, had to leave early, so, thank you to, well, I won't say his name. You know who you are. I prefer to not be on the council money, but it's not about me, I get that. It was a great event, regardless, very well attended, incredibly well attended, and, and again, because our Public Safety does such a tremendous job, not only in the community, but also in terms of the events that they put on and their engagement in the community, it's very easy to get folks who want to come and, and support them in their efforts. So, it was extremely well attended despite it being, you know, in the mid-'90s outside. Surprisingly enough, the last thing I was actually going to mention was Read to a Dog. You know, I typically look at the calendar, if, if other events hadn't been mentioned or events that I want to really highlight, and if you have a child that is either learning to read, or is, you know, either frustrated learning to read, or you have someone in their house that they're reading and constantly jumps in and says the words because they're frustrated with them trying to figure out the words on their own, that actually is a tremendous confidence builder for those children who are just learning how to read, reading to Gertie, who does not, a therapy dog that does not bark at them, or say the word in front of them, or roll her eyes if they're taking a long time to sound out a word, or any of that, and the, the kids get tremendous confidence in learning how to read. Whether the words are right or not, at this point, we don't care. They're learning, they're getting confident, they're understanding, and, and that's the most important thing. Kids get frustrated when they feel like someone else is watching them, or is, is getting frustrated with the amount of time it takes them to read, and, and that does not foster good reading skills, so, that's my former educator in me coming back out. With that, we have a closed session. Is there a motion to enter into closed session? Sorry, Ms. Cipriani, I ran, I read that before you got a chance. Next item, closed session. Is there a motion to adjourn into closed session?
Someone.
So, move my Councilmember Steadman? Support from Councilmember Dean. Ms. Cipriani, would you please call the role?
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Pennon?
Yes.
Steadman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. We are going dark. We will return there. We're going to the room.